The following is a rebroadcast of the Newark City Schools Board of Education's most recent general monthly meeting.
Don't seem to have a gavel tonight, but I think we can go ahead and proceed to call the, to order the Newark's, there we go, okay. Newark City School District Board of Education meeting on today's date, Monday, November 5th, the day before Election Day. Uh, the time now is approximately 6:32. Mr. Anderson, would you please call roll?
Mr. Blind?
Present.
Mr. Bybee?
Present.
Mr. Carr?
Present.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And Mrs. Nickam is absent, but we have a quorum of four.
Thank you, Jeff. And now, Mr. Carr, could you please, uh, leave some of the invocation, please?
Yes. First, we can pledge?
Yes.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim.
Welcome.
Okay. Now, next to our agenda, we have resolutions and recommendations. And Doug, would you like to tell us about the first recognition here?
Yep. Uh, we have a couple guests. Jeff, do you wanna, there's really a treasurer's deal. Somebody brought Jeff a check tonight, so.
I, I would like to ask Diane from First Energy to come forward, and also Judy Hardy to please step up to the microphone. Uh, what this presentation is, is that Ms. Hardy entered a contest of Thanks-A-Million that was put on by First Energy Corporation, which they were giving back prizes to their customers. And she entered the contest and was selected as an individual winner. And she personally, I don't, do you mind if I tell how much you get?
Yeah, not at all.
She personally won $25,000, and simply because she lives in Newark City School Districts, Newark City Schools gets, is going to receive $50,000 tonight, courtesy of First Energy Corporation. And they're gonna present her with a $25,000 check tonight, and I being a good treasurer already have the $50,000 in my pocket. Okay? So, and, and I know that Diane wants to say a few words, and, and please do.
Very pleased to be here in Newark this evening to congratulate two winners of the First Energy Solutions Thanks-A-Million giveaway, and to hand out $75,000 in prize money. As an Ohio-based company, First Energy Solutions is committed to helping ensure the people and businesses in this state continue to thrive. And that all starts with supporting our schools, where Ohio's future is taking shape, which is why we introduced our Thanks-A-Million giveaway. Through this campaign, eight Ohio businesses are receiving $50,000 each from First Energy Solutions. In addition, we are giving away $25,000 each to eight Ohio residents, and $50,000 each to the resident's local school district to use for whatever programs, services, or supplies they need most. This all totals $1 million in cash prizes. So now, I would like to present a check for $25,000 to our residential winner, Judy Hardy of Newark, Ohio. And because of Judy's winning entry, I would now like to present a check for $50,000 to her local school district, the Newark City Schools.
This is Mr. Bybee, our Vice President.
Thank you. One other thing before we move on is that Judy was kind enough to talk to me a little bit before the session, and she was from education herself. She was the Assistant Treasurer, right, at, uh, Licking Valley with Joanne Tolbert. So, she's giving back to education even after she's retired. So, thank you very much for entering again, and, and Thanks-A-Million to everybody.
Thank you, Jeff, and Judy, and Nancy, thank you so much. I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Uh, moving along now, we'll have special reports, and, uh, first person that will hear from special reports is Giselle James, Administrator at Par Excellence Academy. Giselle?
Um, good evening. I have a little technical difficulty. How are you doing?
Wonderful.
Just wanted to come and kinda update everybody on what's going on with Par Excellence Academy. Um, it looks like my PowerPoint is not working, so I'll come back at another time and give you a, give you a, um, a little show when I get it working.
Looks like there's a cover on that.
Yeah, there's, there's a cover on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were doing a distraction. It's restarting, we're trying to.
Oh, wow.
I did, I wasn't distracted.
Okay.
This is just a copy of our annual, annual report. I'm proud, please, to, to such another people raised attention by the Ohio Department of Education, and, um, this is our second year in a row that we are having raised attention, and we're doing a great job. We have a lot of good teachers who are on there. Of course, our goal, that is everybody's goal, um, is to be excellent, and that's something that we're working hard to achieve. Uh, we've had a lot of great things that are happening at our school. For those of you who don't know about Par Excellence Academy, which I'm finding out a lot of people from Par excellence Academy, um, we are Newark, um, they're our sponsor, we're a sponsor, and we're a community school over on 96 Mahalo Street. We have about 145 students, and our students are in five districts. We're an open enrollment school, and one of our focuses is, of course, our academics are our focus, that health, harmony, and service. And we've done a lot of different, um, projects with health, we're a health, which we call a health-based initiative school. We have a fresh fruits and vegetables grant that, um, our students get fresh fruits and vegetables, um, every day as snacks to help educate them, and make them aware of the nutritional needs that students have, and also educate the families. We, um, partner with a community organization, one of them is Naff Research, um, that we together build a beautiful community garden that serves really the families, give the community. And we also have hens, we have a hens program. And we have two hens that come in in the fall and in the spring, and they lay eggs, and our students learn how to life cycle, they learn important nutritional value, raising, um, chickens, and how it gets easier to grab an egg than to get a bag of egg chips, and it gives you a lot more value for your buck, they're economical, and they're much more nutritious. And we have a chef coming from, from the Ohio Department of Education that works with our students, that comes in every other week, and talks about, um, how to cook some really fast, heated things, so that, um, they know the value of nutrition, we believe, not only on what you give them in a book, or what you put in their pocket. So that's kinda who we are. Um, a lot of the population of our school is from just, many of the districts were small, our class sizes are not more than 20. I think our largest class had maybe 22 or 23. Um, what's more, I can tell you is that 80% of our staff has a master's degree, at least one master's degree. So, um, we have some highly qualified teachers, all of them are highly qualified, through the Ohio Department of Education, and, um, we're, had a great year this year, uh, last year, I guess that's the end of this year, we're gonna have a great year this year, but we're most proud of our church right now, where 94% of our students pass our OAA, and I think all of our schools are about 70% in that. Um, so if anybody has any questions, if the board has anything that you would like for me to go over or review, my PowerPoint would have said a lot more. But, uh, I guess with data and technologies, you need a backup plan, yes.
You'd probably explain that, but, uh, number one, where is your community garden location?
It's right at our school, on 96 Mahalo.
And children, are there ones with maintaining plants, maintaining gardens?
Families, not just children, but families. We focus on families, we have a lot of workshops, the master gardeners come in, and we open this to anybody in the community who would like a plot. We have what we call raised bed gardens that, um, we can get a lot out of them, they're actually tucking the ground, and we put in the, the soil dirt and, um, plant that way. But it is a family, we want families to protect that, and, um, we've been doing some jobs. I have a lot of tomatoes here. And that's something else for fast food. What we do is we teach them how you can go to your garden, you can grab a tomato, you can grab a green pepper, different greens that, um, you can grab and eat them, and that's the best fast food you can do. Any other questions? I have two copies of our annual report, which has some more information, if you would like to copy of it. Um, please feel free to get some, there's some extra copies up here. Any questions?
Thank you.
Giselle, I don't, I don't have a question, I have a comment that I wanna make for you. So, that's, uh, Giselle, since, uh, uh, coming to PAR has done a fantastic job of, of not only raising the standard of student achievement at PAR, but also the communication with the district. Uh, Giselle and Mendy Vaughn, I'll credit Mendy for our side of it, have really worked together, and just, so Giselle, we appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
Your staff's doing a great job.
I have to say Newark City Schools are also doing great support, 'cause, um, working together has really made a difference, I think, in the school. It's not just a single effort, it is an effort, a team effort, to, to work with the students and to find out about the community, so, thank you, and for the board's support too. We love it.
Giselle, my understanding of your report correctly, that your graduation rate is 84.3% and that's an improvement from the previous year, is that correct?
Um, our, I'm sorry, our.
Your graduation rate?
Um, our graduation rate, we're K through 5, but all of our kids do very well, and one of the PowerPoints I've had is to track the kids that have come from Par Excellence to Newark City Schools, and they've done well in Newark City Schools, and that's was all what I wanted to really highlight tonight, um, and we have contracted that, that all of our kids who passed the last year, our fifth graders did really well in the OAA, and they went on to Newark City Schools to do very well.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. Any other questions for Giselle? Okay, very well. Uh, and moving along under special reports, we'll have a construction update from, from Leggett and King Scott. Andy, do you wanna give us an update?
Just a quick update tonight on Newark High School Phase 3, which is the building J remodel that we're currently doing. Ceiling grid is complete in the classrooms and is currently going into the media center, which is a library. Light fixtures are currently being installed, we started some floor prep this week to get, get ready to start installing some floors. Uh, the roof and exterior metal panels are complete, so the bulk of the, the outside work is done. Um, we are targeting a loose furnishings date, um, installation date of middle of December, so as we sit right now, we're on schedule, um, looking to turn this thing over, um, right around Christmas break, so. Um, a couple other things, McGuffey, we're working on, um, our financial closeout, um, it should be done here in the next couple weeks. We're finalizing some late-minute change orders, but it looks like our savings is gonna be very significant in the neighborhood of $950,000 to $1 million savings at McGuffey. So, good project, um, good contractors, good team, so, that's kinda where we sit. Um, as we get, you know, farther down the line, we'll start looking at the high school, but we expect a significant savings there also, so. Anybody have any questions? Where we're at?
Andy, thank you very much. And moving along, the next item on our agenda is a technology update, and Doug, you'd like to say a few words about?
Yeah, we have a, uh, every month, we're gonna put this on the agenda, just update where we're at, and, uh, tonight we have Marcy Waymer and Amy Norman from the high school, two of our integration specialists at the high school, uh, to, to update us on, on what's been going on at the high school with our, uh, one-to-one initiative, and, and also as we move forward to our Bring Your Own Technology, Bring Your Own Device project, so. These ladies have done a good job of, of leading, so, along with Alex. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for having us this evening. Uh, my name's Amy Norman, and this is Marcy Waymer, and we are part of the technology team at the high school that's been put into place to help with some of the integration of the technology that's been added, um, not only for the, um, students, but also for our teachers. Um, this is one aspect of what the team has been working on so far. Um, it's a teacher tech talk page, it's for our teachers to communicate, um, both ways, their requests for us, any special needs they have, and our, our communication with them. Um, we've got video links on there, this is one of the video links that's set up kind of as an inspirational piece, trying to inspire their interest into technology and some of the things that we're adding that they can be working on in the classrooms. Uh, we're working on a project right now where the students are now starting to build these video clips, um, and integrate that into their curriculum. Um, and Marcy will talk about some of those student projects here in a minute. Um, the rest of the webpage has quick links here on the side, um, it does address the professional development for student, or excuse me, for teachers that are coming up, different tutorials where we've, um, put mini clips on. If there's something simple that they can, um, look up, maybe they've, we've shown it in a professional development, they forget how to do something, this is their point of reference, they can come back, and a lot of them are set up as in screen captures or the video links, um, clips. Um, there are links and resources here, professional development requests, this is where the student, or excuse me, the teacher can send something to us. Um, if they've got something they're struggling with, something they wanna do in their classroom and they need our help, they can send a request to us, um, through this link. Um, we've done some MacBook shortcuts, it's a little bit different than some of the PCs, um, so it just kinda gives them refresher points. Uh, moving on down, there's, um, a school point link, this is our district's website. Um, all of the teachers at the high school now have a personal homepage available, uh, so that the, um, students, parents, community, um, can check that out, communicate that way. Um, these are, um, all of our labs and different devices that they can schedule, carts with the MacBooks on it, um, the flip cameras if they wanna do that video project, iPads and a couple of the rooms that are set up now as stationary computer labs, so they can send their requests. And then here in the middle are different articles, um, and then different, um, news releases basically that we have for the teachers on that page.
Recently, we have started going out into the classrooms to help the teachers integrate, um, more technology into their classrooms. Alex, right now, is helping Joy Carlson with 11th grade students that just took the OGT. They are now creating videos, um, to pass on to 10th grade teachers to help them understand the benchmarks more, so that students is actually creating the lessons and recording vocabulary. Sue Grenrod and I are gonna start working on history OGT review with vocabulary. Um, kids right now are working on a Great Depression song, and it's all being, um, recorded with the iPads. Um, we've done a lot with the flip cams, foreign language did weather reports, government classes did 60-second, um, political advertisements, um, about the, um, political aspect. You have art critiques going on. Um, I went into Jill Crowe's room, um, and the kids actually had the iPads and were looking at artist work instead of having to look in the text or in a book, because this artist did not publish anything in a book. The kids really enjoyed that. Um, Ann Miller's classroom had a presenter in the day before, and I went in to help the students, because a MacBook is much different than, um, the computers that they usually had, and I helped the kids work around the MacBooks, training things like that. Um, school within a school has done a lot, and the school within a school does have, um, the MacBooks out for them. More teachers are becoming more and more comfortable, um, starting tomorrow, um, we're having our own tech conference at the high school, in which, um, we have 14 presenters, which are teachers within the high school, um, presenting on 14 different topics. Um, you have Prezi, Google Docs, Google Forms, QR codes, um, e-readers, that we are offering 30-minute professional development sessions that the teachers got to pick seven, and so we formed our own conference to get them more comfortable. Um, we're available before school, after school, um, for any teacher that needs help during, um, conference time. I think, starting this job, I've logged about seven miles per day going around that high school, helping teachers and students and stuff like that.
Ladies, if you, if you could address, 'cause you're touching a little bit on a point that, as a district, and particularly at the high school, uh, that we talked to, to our staff about last year, about rate yourself on a scale of 1 to 10, and, uh, you know, don't look at a person beside you, rate yourself on a scale of 1 to 10 on where you feel, uh, your tech skills are. And what I've noticed, uh, by allowing our teachers, uh, to have this freedom of, of presenting and things like that, can you touch a little bit on where have our teachers, since last April, uh, have the fours become fives, have the seven becomes eight, those type of things, uh, from the process we're going through?
I know one teacher, when we first gave her this, 'cause we provided them to them in July, and I created a cheat sheet, and we just said, you know, "Go home, just mess around with this." When she came to school in August, she said, "I'm gonna throw this thing." Now she says, "Ah, I really like this a lot." And now, you know, getting them comfortable, getting them more into, getting, integrating this into the classroom, then we have to start working with the students. I think several teachers have moved up the ladder with these.
And I have to say, um, with the devices that we have this year, we got, um, some professional development days specifically from Apple. And, um, Thursday and Friday, we'll have two more of those days this week. Um, the previous ones that we participated in, in the summer, when we, um, deployed the devices with the teachers, we had them do a survey, and basically they ranked themselves on that scale. And we use those, um, surveys, plus the ones that were in the position of, um, department head, we wanted them to become, train the trainers, so they're the specialists in the buildings and can help each other. And when we went around and selected the teachers, the first thing we heard was, "Oh, this must be the beginners' class, they're the, the special ones," or whatever. And after the first day, it was a two-day training, after the first day, people that were not in the training came to us and said, "Why wasn't I selected for the training? When will I hit Apple training?" So they're very anxious, um, to be part of the project now that word of mouth is coming out, what other people are doing. They're sharing among themselves, and they wanna be a big part of it.
On, um, Thursday and Friday, 40 people were selected, um, for iMovie and, um, iPa, uh, iMovie, i, is it?
iLife.
iLife, and a lot of teachers, I mean, we have a waiting list, waiting.
Great. And that training is going on Thursday or Friday of this week, November 8th and 9th, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Does that training last all day, is it just an hour, or?
All day.
Okay.
And I've been a Mac person for seven years, and when I left the training last time, I learned stuff that I didn't even know.
Really?
So, yeah.
And I know today was, uh, Waiver Day, that dealt with a lot of data and some things like that for our staff, but that allowed us tomorrow then to free us up into your little, uh, professional development, technology-wise, and so, as we look at Waiver Days and how we're spending them and those type of things, uh, it's, uh, I think it's just awesome that our teachers are presenting to each other and, and sharing in those ideas, and, and I, you know, I can't say this enough, I compliment Maura Horgan, uh, for her heads-up on, on these type of things and putting the right people in the right positions, and you guys have done a fan, not just you guys, the high school staff has done a fantastic job of embracing this, so. 'Cause the kids win, and, yes, the kids are excited about this, so, it's great.
And the trickle-down effect, the students, um, how are they, I imagine they're pretty excited about this, too?
They wanna know when they're getting their own device.
Yes.
When will this be mine?
And I, I would mention that we have a team going to, uh, a conference or a little workshop, oh yeah, Tim said Christmas.
Christmas present.
Yeah. We, we have a team going to a workshop, uh, Thursday on, on bringing your own technology and your own device. Uh, Amy's part of that, Marcy's staying behind with the Apple Professional Development, Maura's going, Cess going, uh, those type of things, and, and so, uh, and as we work with, with John and talk a little bit about LAC and things like that, uh, uh, these are huge things in our partnership, uh, from a technology standpoint, so, anyway.
Well, I'll tell you, aren't too many days that go by that I don't get a question from somebody in the community about this issue, and, and when are the students gonna get the, the MacBooks, and, and how's the training, and what's the status of all this? So it's, it's pleasing to see that, uh, that we're moving forward at a, at a good rate.
They're out, they're using them.
Right.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, not from me.
Thank you. Now, okay. Next on the agenda, scheduled communications from the floor. Uh, I particularly like this part of, of our meeting, because it gives our public a chance to come forward to the microphone and, uh, and state what's on your mind. Do we have anybody in the audience tonight that would like to step forward and, and address the board? Yes, sir?
Sir, I just have a question for the ladies in the technology, if they could assess that here.
Sure, sure.
For reference to the teachers that, uh, have their own website, or home page on the district website, is that something that's only available to the high school staff right now, for that district, why? For the teachers, uh, for, then do you like?
Are you asking about the other buildings, teachers having websites as well?
Correct.
A lot of them are being encouraged to do that, so.
I'm, like, I'm going tomorrow to Cherry Valley, Hillview, some of their teachers about starting their own, and if anybody is interested in it, I will come to your building, I'll, I'll work with you to get them.
I'm just curious, 'cause I can see that as potentially a, a nice tool for the parents to use when they came. It's wonderful, it'll be available to all the buildings.
This is something that's been very important.
Okay, that concludes our regular business portion of the meeting. Uh, we need, move now to treasurer's recommendation. Jeff?
Thank you, Dan. Uh, item 2A is approval of minutes from Board of Education meeting on October the 8th, 2012 regular meeting. Item 2B is approval of November 2012 financial statements and payment to the vendors that y'all have access to on Bear. Item 2C is approval of 2013 Permanent Supplemental Appropriation Resolution. There's three items in that, uh, as you can see. Uh, $425 is a Heritage Staff Trust budget revision, uh, the $20,000 is the new grant for the van, for Walter Glazinski's class, uh, and I forget the name of the bakery that they run, but they're the ones that provided the, uh, brownies and the cookies at our, our Sledgehammer, and they've got some over here.
Cookies tonight, yep, yes.
And, uh, item 499 is Ohio Clean Diesel School Bus Grant, uh, that's cleaning up the old grant, and last month, we approved the acceptance of the new grant, that's a follow-up to that one. So that's your items that are changing the appropriation. Then item, uh, 2D is approval to pay invoices. Uh, those are two invoices that were over three months due. Uh, the first one is for the, uh, hiring, the cleaning of the E and F wings at the high school on a time and materials basis, that was missed in the basic bid. And then the other one is for $4,085.80 to purchase bookcases and chairs for Hillview Elementary, uh, that was missed on their project also. Uh, other than that, I would ask for the boards to approve items 2A through D.
So moved. Second? Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion carries. Uh, moving now to superintendent's recommendation. Doug?
Okay, under Personnel, um, item 1 is retirement resignations, you'll see Brandy Young, those are all her supplementals, you approved Brandy's, um, resignation last month, uh, these are her supplementals, and, and I did wanna mention Barbara has that posted now at Wilson, and since we're, we're carrying that technology theme on, uh, the ladies that, that you saw tonight, uh, are kind of our thought with Wilson Middle School in terms of, of, uh, posting that position and see what kinda technology integration that we can get out of that position, and with a teaching, uh, teaching a few classes also, and so Barbara's working with John Davis to, to kinda move that forward on down into the, uh, middle schools, because, uh, Amy and Marcy tonight with Alex, uh, you know, we're doing these things, we do these things that are cost-neutral or cost-savings, uh, measure, in other words, we're not adding, uh, staff members to integrate technology, we're using the staff that we have right now and, and integrating some things, and, and so I did wanna mention that and appreciate Barbara and John's work with, uh, uh, trying to start that as we, we filter that down through our, our system a little bit. Um, item, there are no, no leaves under item 2. Um, item 4, all the supplemental contracts, most of those are coaches or fine art.
the staff that we have right now and, and integrating some things. And, and so I did want to mention that and appreciate Barbara and John's work with uh, uh, trying to start that as we, we filter that down through our, our system a little bit. Um, item, there are no, no leaves under item two. Um, item four, all the supplemental contracts. Most of those are coaches or fine arts, uh, positions. Uh...
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, yeah, we do have under appointments and assignments, we do have
uh, Vicky Robertson, a bus driver, on there. Item four, again, is the supplemental contracts. Item five, salary and position adjustments for three people. Item six, a few tutors, approved at the tutor rate. Substitutes under item seven, I did want to mention that Barbara Stockdale is a retired teacher coming back to sub for us. We're excited about having Barbara, uh, do that. She's a good lady. Amanda Corona, who left for an opportunity this summer, uh, is back and will substitute for us along with County Parks. Uh, so all three of those ladies have been in the system before and we welcome them back as substitutes. Uh, we also have some aides there to approve and then under other, uh, there is no other. So I recommend the board approve items one through eight.
One through eight. Uh, I'd like to have a motion, please?
So moved.
Tom? Uh, in discussion on these. Okay, Jeff, you want to go, or? Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay, under item B, uh, which is curriculum, uh, students, no tuition. Under item one, item two, special ed contracts. Approve the special ed contracts that are listed there, which are, are, uh, mandatory that we provide the special ed contracts. Most of those students are foster-placed in, in other districts throughout Ohio. Under item six, the approval of the out-of-state field trips. Uh, we would have the eighth-grade students going to Washington, DC, March eighteenth through the twenty-first. Uh, we're excited about that and hopefully uh, we have some donations coming in, as we've spoke before about that. And then the uh, French and, and Spanish students to Spain, Madrid, Spain, and, and Paris, France, on March twenty-first through the twenty-ninth. Items one through six, under curriculum students.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to have a motion to approve items one through six.
So moved.
Okay. And discussion?
Who was the second? I didn't get the second.
Second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
Case we don't get a chance to mention it later, I will mention that the eighth-grade Washington, DC trip, they are accepting donations since we do not have our main funding source for a couple of years. So anyone who would like to contribute, like to help, it's an important trip, it's a valuable experience for the kids, feel free to be generous.
Well, I'm glad you said that because uh, I can tell you from experience, I've got a daughter that's a senior in college and she still remembers that trip that she took. So that's just how, kind of an impression that makes on, on young people at, at that level. So, okay. So Jeff, would you like to call? Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes. And that motion carries.
Okay. Under item C, gifts. Uh, the first gift is a yearly donation from Park National Bank of five thousand dollars, which supports the student fund at Heritage Middle School, uh, which is put to good use and we really appreciate that donation, uh, from Park. Um, a monetary donation from the Lookin County Foundation, as Jeff mentioned earlier, uh, for the purchase of a, a van, uh, for the NHS Smiling with Hope Bakery Program. That's what it is, which is basically a part of our curriculum, uh, for students up there who uh, are starting to do some, every month they provide the board with some goodies back there and, and uh, so it's a unique and innovative way to present some things to kids and we're really proud of that program. Uh, and then, of course, the, earlier tonight, the First Energy and the fifty thousand dollar check. And again, thank you very much for entering that contest that you really didn't know you entered. And uh, we, and you can enter a few more of those, by the way. Uh, so those are our, our gifts.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to have a motion to, to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, Jeff? Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
And under item D, business, uh, contracts, services, uh, uh, the approval of a lease agreement with the governing board of the Lookin County Educational Service Center, um, which basically followed, uh, LACCA and ESC both the same, ten years. Uh, so it's just a, a little bit of a change in the years and, and uh, that's really the major change.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
Second. And discussion? Jeff? Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
Under Board of Education reports, Dan, I'll turn that, or do you want me to go through those, Dan?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. Uh, I don't know if, under A, the Legislative Liaison, if there's any report.
I don't have a report, I don't have a report. Thanks.
Uh, item B, intent to adopt the board policies. Uh, below, under Personnel Committee, uh, file fourteen eleven, file thirty-two eleven, file forty-two eleven. Uh, under Assault Committee, file twenty-three forty, file twenty-six twenty-three, file twenty-six twenty-three oh-two, file fifty-four ten, file fifty-four sixty. And that's it, under item B. Um, adoption of the board policies would be from Assault Committee, file twenty-two sixty oh-one, which is the prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Item D is approval of resolution, policy revisions. It's recommended Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Whereas House Bill four eighty-seven, part of the mid-buying and budget review, repeal requirements to obtain a declaration of material assistance, non-assistance, uh, from new employees or from entities or persons prior to doing business with or contracted, contracting for services. And whereas the repeal of this requirement in effect September tenth, two thousand and twelve, and whereas certain board policies must be modified to reflect the implementation of House Bill four eighty-seven. Um, now, there be it resolved that the board modifies the following policies as set forth below. Delete policy eighty-one twenty, Declaration Regarding Material Assistance, Non-Assistance to Terrorist Organization, and revise policies twelve twenty, employment of the superintendent. Guess I better see what that revision is before I keep going on. Uh, policy-
Make a motion.
Policy thirteen ten-
Discussion?
Employment of the treasurer. Policy fifteen twenty, employment of administrators. Policy thirty-one twenty, employment of certified staff. Thirty-one twenty oh-four, employment of substitute teachers. Thirty-one twenty oh-five, employment of personnel in summer school and adult education programs. Thirty-one twenty oh-six, selecting student teachers, administrative interns. Thirty-one twenty oh-seven, employment of casual resource personnel. Thirty-one twenty oh-eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Policy forty-one twenty, employment of certified staff. Forty-one twenty oh-four, employment of substitutes. Forty-one twenty oh-eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Sixty-three twenty purchases. Sixty-four forty cooperative purchasing. Sixty-four fifty, local purchasing. Sixty-four sixty, vendor relations. I'm done.
Well, I can tell you, there's been a lot of work done on Assault Committee and a lot of work done on policy revisions and Maura, you're to be thanked for that. That's a lot of work, as well as others that may have been involved. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Moving now to item number five on our agenda for board discussion. And uh, Tim, we'll go ahead and start with you and just work our way this way.
Well, I'm just to encourage everybody, uh, by the time you see this, um, you won't have the opportunity to vote anymore, but I hope you did. Um, I'll be glad to see a Tide commercial, um, instead of, really, anything else. Um, so, but I am, um, it's a big day in, in our country and uh, so, uh, looking forward to tomorrow, see what it holds.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Uh, for those who might happen to hear this before tomorrow night, I mentioned the Washington trip. They are having a dinner tomorrow at Commons, after election from six to eight, as a fundraiser. Go vote, then go enjoy dinner. A lot of people hear this afterwards. Anna, hit, hit, hit. You know, hopefully we can, uh, get some folks there and raise some money. I'd like to congratulate the two cross-country runners that ran in the state Saturday. Um, they ran, one just broke sixteen minutes, the other one was a couple of seconds over, and that's for three point one miles. So, uh, that's moving. And I, I think it's the first time at least that I can remember we've had two runners make it to the state. And I think both of them did break the school record, so that's pretty impressive. I'd like to thank Phil, or Brad Philhauer and his students for being here. You know, I know this is not a real interesting way to spend your evening, but it is an important part of getting the word out to people and we appreciate you spending the evening here with us. That'll pass.
Thank you.
Now, I would take the opportunity to thank the individuals and organizations that donated money, uh, to this district. You know, you look, and we, we collected seventy-five thousand dollars in, uh, checks this evening. That's, uh, that's pretty impressive. And uh, so I would thank them and with that, I'd pass.
Okay, thank you. And I want to extend thanks as well. Um, you know, I've said it before, these companies in our community, they can do a lot of things with their money. And they thank enough of us in the education system to give us that much money. It's, it's really, uh, it's, it's extremely well-appreciated. So thank you. And Giselle, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, we really enjoyed hearing about Par Excellence and, and the good work that you're doing there, so, so thank you for being here. And, and again, we know tomorrow's a big day. Uh, you know, I encourage everyone to familiarize yourself with the issues and, and then go vote. Uh, that's one of the, the freedoms that we have in this country, that uh, no matter what our differences may be and how much we fuss with one another, we still have that freedom to be able to, to express our opinion. So, so thank you. Uh, Jeff?
I'm thankful that I'm in Newark, Ohio. I'm thankful I live in the United States of America and I'm thankful to all the veterans that have fought wars, battles, conflicts, whatever you want to call it. To me, if they put a gun in hand and they're shooting, it's a war. And I want to thank every veteran that's out there that's listening to us, that they fought at one point in time, or if they just put a uniform on and served here in a training environment. I thank God that I live in a country that I can vote and I have the privilege to listen to all the commercials from all of our politicians. Because there's a lot of countries that, that they can't do that. They can't speak out. And we low that, owe that all to our veterans. And I want to know, want them to know that I support them fully. And if there's anything I could do for any one of them, I'd be happy to do it. And honored.
I'm gonna use my time tonight to talk a little bit about who we are and what we do here in the Newark City Schools and, and uh, you know, as we, as we head into the second round of, uh, grading period here, second nine weeks, you know, we step back and we, we take a look at August up through November and, and what a great start to the school year we had, uh, in our district. And, and we've had a lot that could, could trip us up with, uh, new buildings and, and some things that way. And, and uh, so I, I just want to, want to mention how proud and, and uh, how appreciative I am of our community here and how they rally around the schools. And Kurt brought up, uh, how much money was donated tonight. Uh, and that doesn't go into the amount of time. You, you walk in our elementary buildings and, and a lot of times you see volunteers in there working with students and, and uh, retired people that don't have kids in school now and, but they're engaged in, in, in school and, and what our school is all about and what they're doing. And so I'm, I'm really, uh, proud of our, our community that way. Our parents are very supportive here and uh, you know, work with us and, and providing an education for their students. Uh, our staff is just fantastic, uh, from our, our bus drivers to our science teachers, to our administrators, to our board, uh, to, uh, our cooks and, and cleaning. Our buildings are always, uh, very well-maintained and, and we take a lot of pride in those things. And it's important that our kids come in, safe, healthy environments that are clean and, and those type of things. And so, uh, as you, as you witnessed tonight with our technology report and some things that way, our staff has really taken a look at how to deliver instruction to students and, and really working hard and, and taking a few steps, uh, in a way of, of not doing the easy thing, but doing the right thing for our kids. And, and you have to change on what, the way you're delivering, uh, uh, your, your instruction these days. And I just get around from our fall sports and I don't really care what records, where, I don't care if, if our fall sport, uh, won every game or, or lost every game. I'm very proud of our kids because we act in a, a very, very mature, uh, uh, way, uh, manner, and when, because that, that is, that, that says Newark on your uniform. And whether you go to Pickerington or, or Olentangie or you play a contest here in Newark, our kids represent our school very well. And I'm very proud of our coaches and of our students on, uh, how they achieved. And in my book, when, uh, in the long run, uh, uh, respect and, and attitude and those things are a lot bigger than a win or, or a, a loss, uh, for, uh, for, for that matter. Our fine arts are, our, uh, uh, choir had a fantastic program a couple of weeks ago in the auditorium. And I sit there and I look at that, that talent up on stage and it's like, wow. Uh, just fantastic. Uh, we've got a, and I'm sorry, I don't, didn't write the exact date down, but you can check our website out. I know we have, uh, a play coming up from the drama. Uh, we've got, as we, I can't believe I'm talking about this, but we have Christmas programs coming up also, uh, with our students here. And, and uh, our, our students in, at the high school last Thursday and really up, up through our, our school, within our school, uh, did a fantastic project, uh, that, that integrated art into social studies and English. And it was really neat to, to read the students' take on the projects. And uh, what we're doing is, you see, it might not be with a MacBook, but it can be with a camera or some, some other way of delivering things, that the kids will really appreciate, uh, those type of things. And then, uh, some of the things that do not show up on a report card, uh, are, are the Energy Co-op, uh, with, with, I wanted to say Brad Bird, but it's Gary Baker. Uh, Gemma has, headed that project up for us, so Gemma down at the ASC has, in our, one of our meeting rooms, has three hundred and fifty coats, hats, gloves, and, and some blankets that the Energy, uh, Co-op had collected for us, uh, in a community that will be dispersed out through our schools. And, and little things like that, the caring attitude that, that we have here, and that's where I'm talking about our community steps forward, uh, because it is getting cold. And, and the reality is, some of our kids do not have, uh, coats, winter coats and things like that. So we are so thankful and appreciative of the support that we get, uh, uh, in educating our students. It's, it's awesome. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Doug, that's very well said. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, at this time, I'd, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. Uh, we're gonna adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussions concerning the appointment or employment of personnel for the district technology. LACCA?
So moved.
And?
Okay.
Jeff?
Sure that you're going to executive session at seven twenty PM.
Yes, and it is our intent to, to conduct, uh, business and, and to make a, a decision upon our return.
Good. Thank you. And we stand adjourned?
Yep.
Down the hallway to Teacher's Lounge, down on the right.